Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the January 17th council meeting of the city of Wyndham. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have included are the minutes from the council of January 3rd, EDA January 9th, Community Center Commission January 9th, Planning Commission January 10th, and the Library Board January 10th. Also included are the regular bills.
I'd make the motion to approve their consent agenda.
Aye, second.
Motion by Marv, second by Scott. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries on to department heads. We have two of them here tonight. Are you both, you're both are good today? All right, we'll move along. Liquor store design update. We are there. John is here.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. So I'm here in front of you guys tonight. This is just an agenda item, no action required. In, at the October 25th budget meeting, it was decided to pursue a new conceptual design plans and cost estimates for a remodel expansion to the store from TSP. Over November and December, I met via Zoom with Greg Shore, the architect with TSP, who did the original feasibility study that was presented to you in April of 2021, to design a warehouse expansion of about 1,000 square feet onto the south side of the current liquor store, remodeling the interior of the current building and adding a windbreak to prevent the north wind from blowing right into the main entrance of the building. During the review process, information was shared with council member Quaid and city administrator Steve. Revisions and adjustments were made from the first design that was given to TSP and incorporated into what we have here in the attachment today. I received, on January 9th, I received the cost estimates for this design. The costs come back between $600,000 and $700,000. With this, the potential timeline for this project, we're looking at presenting this to you guys tonight. The first meeting in March, potentially get a proceed or not to proceed from the city council with Phase 2, which includes where they will put the finalized design together, help us with the bid process and construction management through the whole project. And then we would finalize plans in June sometime with TSP, with hopes to bid the project in July, and then potentially break ground with construction in September. Potential project timeline with construction, they estimate to be about four to six months. So included is the design, which is on the screen. Everything in the grayish color is all the current floor plan of the current liquor store. The new addition would be that yellow warehouse onto the back of the building. Due to the floodplain elevations, it's estimated that that new building has to be up about two to two and a half feet above where our current floor level is to get that out of the floodplain. So in the back of the store is a ramp to help with moving product from the warehouse onto the main floor. We add, we reuse our existing cooler in this plan. That's the main cooler there in the bottom part of the screen. On the top part of the screen is a additional cooler that we would add. And then some other remodeling that gets done, we have to extend the mechanical room due to that new cooler as that's where the current access to the mechanical room is. So we can expand that to get access into the mechanical room. Currently where that area is, is where the office is, and we'd move the office up to the front counter or front corner of the store near those windows. Nothing else would change in the floor plan. We would add in all the open space and perimeter wall shovings, the gondola shelving in the middle and then wall shelving on the outside. And then down in the bottom part of the screen is kind of where we have all of our additional coolers within the store. Pop machines, ice machines, our singles cooler. And then another part of this project, council member Quaid and myself looked at the windbreak option, and it was discussed to maybe just enclose that into a Vestive View style with some, one set of windows throughout to let the light in, and that would help with just the weather break. And with that design, we take our entrance door and just swing that out so that customers would enter in from the east side, and it'd eliminate all that northwest wind that comes in that doorway there. It does jet out into the parking lot a little bit. I don't see any parking issues as we do have some depth there anyway. It would create a little bit of hazards with the first few parking spots. Just with, when they get out of their car, they'd have to walk around the part of the building to get in. We'd move the ADA accessible parking into a closer area for that door access, and that's about it. Do you guys have any questions? I could answer them. Otherwise, this is just informal now, and until we go ahead with Phase 2, there's nothing else we do right now, so.
Okay, we will open this up for questions. If I could start, I do have a couple. You talked about September would be your construction start, correct?
Estimated yes. If things go to plan, we'd try to aim after Labor Day.
And the, and you said about four months. That takes you through a couple holiday events and whatnot. Are you going to, are you attempting to keep the store open through all of this, or how are you, how are you going to go about that?
In my mind, the way this project could be staged, there would be very minimal interruptions to service. It's very potential, we could get the warehouse added, move inventory to that new warehouse, put a new, put our new cooler in, and then we could dismantle our old cooler, and that would open up the floor plan to that new cooler. And then get, just add the shelving into the store as it opens up. There'd probably be some interruptions when the remodel stuff's going on with the mechanical room and office, but I see that as very minimal.
Okay, and I would assume through the bidding process, that'll be part, part of that specification is to keep it open and usable during that construction.
Correct.
Okay. The coolers, these are used coolers. Prior to the meeting, I was asking you about the age of the, how many coolers are there? Are there just one?
Currently, we have just one cooler, and that's that cooler sitting on the bottom side of the screen there. That's the cooler that's in there now. It's 13, 24-inch doors. And we could potentially reuse that cooler in the corner, or there's potential to replace them both. And then we'd have some resale value into that box and compressors.
And I was worried about the age and the life expectancy, that sort of thing, that you're not opening up another hole and, or whatever, I guess, to get new coolers back in there at a later time, that sort of thing. So.
Yeah, we'll continue to evaluate whether new coolers are needed or reuse some parts of it or go from there, so.
And your current estimate, was that based on keeping the coolers that we have?
The estimate of $600,000 to $700,000 does not include the equipment of shelving or the coolers.
Okay. Other questions from the council? Marv?
Just looking at this plan, do you look at as a minimum you need? Do you have room for growth in two years from now?
We always have room for growth. If you think of what sales have done since 2010, sales have just skyrocketed. This, this warehouse space, on the next page, is kind of a comparison of what our square footages are between. So that top line there is cooler space. Cooler space would increase about 74%. My philosophy, if it's cold, it's sold. Cold product sells a lot quicker than the warm product. Our warehouse space, you actually see about a 2% decrease in space. Basically, our back room gets mimicked by the new warehouse, so. But hopefully, with the additional square footage on the floor and shelving, we're able to move some of that product out of our back room onto our shelves. But obviously, more square footage in the warehouse space is better because that's where we could use it too. The Vestive View is a big increase because we are expanding that footprint out front to allow for that interior of it. No change in the service counter, we leave all that the same. Retail space is about a 12% increase in space just because you're still have the cooler space that takes up space that's not counted. The office is an increase, but that's just filling in kind of that corner of the store there that, you know, the Vestive View kind of covers. It's viewed as kind of dead shopping area in the store. Most people don't know it's there, so turn in something usable that's out of the way. Restrooms, mechanical room, there's a small increase there, and that's just to create the extra entrance into there. And then it is a crowded room, so maybe moving some of the water softeners around, things like that. The biggest thing is the, you'll see about a 19% overall estimated program space size. But the shelving is what we'll see a lot of increases in. Currently, our, we have 545 linear feet of perimeter shelving and 384 feet of gondola shelving. Now, that doesn't include things that are filled by displays right now. We'd lose a lot of display space, but that would get worked out in other areas. If you go down a little bit, so you'd see an additional 40% in linear feet of shelving space. So there's a lot of product that we can get out onto the shelves that we currently can't.
You had, you had mentioned in the past, your projection, a new store would give you an increase in sales. You were guessing a number based on maybe what Worthington did?
It shows the average increase in sales from a new build is an additional 3% to 6%. A lot of people want to come in and see that. Without a new building, you know, just a remodel, I would say it'd probably be on the lower end of that 3%. But you're still going to see additional increases over the years by people coming in, have more products available to customers, and a lot of customers will want to come in and see what we got. And if we can make it more welcoming off the highway, a lot of people will stop more often, too.
Six, six to 700,000, that's a lot of difference. That's a lot, that's a lot of money, that hundred thousand dollars. What are you, were you thinking on, as far as your coolers? Are you kind of thinking that way too, or?
The reason why we did the 600 to 700,000 is there's still some things that we need to make some changes in the plans, and that's more in the finalizing stage. I don't see any additional increases in the current number for the design plans, but there is some things that we need to talk about as decreases to it to save some of that money. So that's why we left it as that room.
Your, your product, are you still going to come in through those east doors?
Where our current delivery door is, that will be filled in and replaced with an emergency exit only. It would be something that we would use while the Vestive View is getting completed, that project. That would become the main entrance for the store, but all product deliveries would come from the south end where that big arrow is on the backside of the building.
There's plenty of room for them to unload. I mean, you're gonna, you're, you're still going to be, what? Say three feet above the, the current floor? And you're going to have a ramp?
We'll have a ramp between the new building and the old building.
Right.
But the back of the building where they come in, we have to fill the grade around the building. The, according to Mr. Spielman, we need to, I think 15 feet around our building needs to be at that elevation as well.
I think, Jim, that's part of the floodway.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, there will be fill underneath the concrete slab that the new building will rest on. We have a 20-foot ramp that would stretch out. Yeah. So the ramp starts here, this is the level, and it drops all the way down to the floor here. So this is all one ramp. I can't remember what the length of this cooler is, but it runs that whole length of that cooler. Yes. Yep, this is from the new building, old building. This would be built up to accommodate the ramp down. So this would meet the level of the new store. Deliveries would come in here. And then they would just make their way down onto the store with product or into the coolers.
Well, yeah, that makes a little more sense.
Kind of hitting on something Jim brought up is the ramp length. Does this all have to be ADA accessible inside? No, I'm hearing Steve say no. Okay. Not public space. Yep, thank you.
Even though it's inside the store, it's not public space?
Yep.
If it was in the floor area where your product is, I would say that's public space, and that would have to meet it.
So a lot of this is always compliant, I guess. Wouldn't make no difference.
Yeah, the only reason we're building up is the floodplain, but from the back where the ramp would start into the warehouse, that would be all employee and delivery personnel only. So that ramp area is wide enough to accommodate bringing a whole pallet down, the ramp. And then the ramp will not be steep, that will lose control of that pallet. Our vendors come in with an automatic electric jack, and then we would upgrade our current ramp or our current jack to have a brake on it.
The, would the heights of the building remain consistent then with existing, or will you step up two feet on that as well?
That hasn't been discussed. As we only discussed the floor plan option, we didn't get into any of the final design plans or roof lines or anything like that. I would expect that this building would be a little bit higher because you're adding two feet, and you don't want to cut down on headspace.
Well, that was my next question, is will you still stack them just as high as you do now, or higher, or is there a limit to that?
There is also limits to how high we can stack things, and so it won't get much higher.
Okay, I gotta let Scott talk. He had his button pressed.
Now, with the new plan, with that, and your gondola coming in the front door, would that be more or less helping out for wheelchair accessibility into the, onto the floors and all that stuff? Because right now, you really can't get too much around in there from what I could see of.
This would help open up some of the aisles and cut down on displays. All of the shelving is placed at five-foot distances, which is ADA compliance. Everything in the floor plan is done to ADA compliance. As long as everything is set as in this floor plan, everything all the way in will be ADA compliance.
Okay, and then, I am new to this, when was the last time we stuck any money into the liquor store? How many years ago has that been?
It would just be.
Has there been any updating to that place at all?
The new roof in the early, mid to late 90s. So that's the last major upgrades that have been done to the building that I'm aware of. Since 2018, we haven't done anything major, haven't had any major equipment breakdowns, things like that. I know at one point, the compressors for the current cooler were replaced. I don't know when that was, and I don't know the lifetime of them. We do have a preventive maintenance plan on them where they are monitoring them twice a year for potential issues. Bathroom was converted to one.
So really, we stuck very little money into this building so far? Yeah, but I mean, for, yeah, okay, thank you.
Your, your lights?
When they, they come to deliver, run through once. How, how are they going to get in there and come in there to the back door? Do you have a lot of keg storage there?
That uses regularly for kegs, but those are very minimal. It's putting one on a cart and put it in the corner of a cooler. Currently, our kegs sit on this end or in between the split here, and then we load them out and take them off the side door for the customers.
Yeah, that's what I was, that there is, when you had that gray area there, it's going to have to be, otherwise, it's going to have to be some kind of hard surface. I know that. I mean, that's withstand reason.
Dennis? Jenny, any comments? You worked with John on this?
Yes, I feel like I've been working with John on this since Joanne Ray was on council, and we went round and round on plans and locations and all this different kind of stuff. And I think finally realizing, you know, we like the location that the liquor store is in, not to move it. We know that it's, you know, unreasonable to think that we can build a new store, you know, like totally demolish what we have and start fresh with just the prices that are out there to be able to build right now. So I think this is the best compromise. We do need to do something with the liquor store. We do need to put some money into that and freshen it up. If you've even driven by there in the evening, or, you know, when we did a tour and walked around outside, most of the outside lights that are supposed to be underneath and around the building aren't even functioning. They should all be changed over to LED. I mean, there's just a lot of, you know, little things too that need to be done there to really upgrade and maintain that building and make it look better. And adding this is just huge. I mean, if you've been in there and tried to get around, there's so much stuff stacked everywhere that I don't know that a person in a wheelchair could get around to shop and, you know, get what they'd want and get out of that store. And the, the front area, this idea, you know, we had talked about just a, a little windbreak area, and then, you know, John came up with this idea of this whole enclosed space, and that was like the best thing ever, I think, idea. Because if you've been down there when it's snowing and blowing and everything else, they normally have to keep the one door shut and just use one door, everybody going in and out one, because there's just so much cold air coming in and snow blowing in the store that it's, you know, it's just not. This is a much better idea to come around the side. Then there's a little more room for the shopping carts to be. There's definitely then, with all the window space in the front, going to be more room for signage so that when people pull up, they can see, oh, look at this on sale, look at this deal. We don't have a lot of that space right now that this is going to give us. So I think this is really going to be a well-organized, you're going to be able to come in the store and see things instead of just coming in and going for the one thing that you always go there for. You'll actually be able to look around and see that there are other options and things to purchase. So I really like the idea of the plan, the expansion, and getting things cleaned up and organized.
Any other comments? John, Scott?
And I feel it is one of the businesses that we have in town that does make its own money. And if we need to upgrade something, we should, I feel we should stick some money into the place. So you gotta spend some money to make money. And how much money we want to make on an old building, or we want to upgrade our new building or building so it looks like a newer building would help a lot, I feel. Because it is one of the businesses that we see as you're driving in from the south, that's the first part of Wyndham besides Quick Trip out there. You see that. And if you upgrade it, look, make it look nice, I think people are going to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna kind of point my finger back at Steve. Have you talked anything about a potential, at this time, potential financing plan for the building? Or options that you'd look at? Would part of it be some kind of loan or inter-fund loan? Or would you be looking totally paid for out of their fund, that sort of thing?
I think the discussion we had with the previous council at budget time was to do as much funding out of the reserve at the liquor store as we could do. We didn't want to drain that all the way down because they may have some needs that pop up during the year that we're unaware of. So the discussion John and I had had is looking at, you know, with the interest rates going up on bonding, things like that, why would we want to, you know, essentially pay interest, more interest in what we're gaining on our reserve fund, right? And so using cash for a portion of the purchase, and then talking with Eller Associates to see if we could do like an equipment bond. You know, we've done that before for three, some things. Equipment bond is good. It's a three-year bond, and then you can renew it once. So you could have between the three and a six-year window to pay that back. And so if we looked at the coolers, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars on the coolers to purchase those, maybe from the equipment bond piece of it, and then have that little bit of debt paid off over a three-to-six-year period of time, that would then make the rest of the project fair, pretty close to affordable with the, gotta push the button, fairly close to affordable with the reserves that we've got on hand. So that's kind of the initial thought that we had on, on financing it, so.
I just think that's a good question right now, just to give the council an idea of some options that may come to the floor. So people like me won't just say, no, you said 500,000, that's it. So, Mr. Gertling?
Steve, what do you think the impact to the transfer would be then, while we are paying off the liquor store? Steve, what do you think the impact to the transfer would be then, while we are paying off the liquor store?
Well, the, the thought was not to impact the transfer, to leave the transfer as it sits. And, because they're making about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year now, and then dedicating that, let's say thirty thousand dollars a year to debt service, to do that over six years, that's a hundred and eighty thousand. And with, you know, a two-hundred thousand dollar loan, we'd be fairly close at, at paying that back, just without touching the transfer. So hopefully as more sales, three to three percent or whatever, you know, come in, there's, you know, that margin maybe grows just a little bit, and so there's a, we have that ability. We're still gonna keep some money in reserve in case of an emergency, but then we should also have that reserve money sitting there too. So if we had to dip into it because we didn't, you know, have the thirty grand profit, we then have someplace to backfill that from and not have any risk to the general taxpayers or any other fund, so.
Now, three percent growth won't make the payments?
It'll be fairly close, depending on how much that is profit. You know, just three percent rise in sales does not necessarily represent you X number of dollars in profit. So that has a lot to do with the margins on what the products are selling. I was gonna add to the other comment, the other conversation John had had is to look at this when we do it, and maybe have some add alternates, you know, so if we had a new cool, yeah, sorry, took your, wind out of your sails, to have some add alternates, like the vestibule maybe is an add alternate rather than having the full glass enclosure that's, you know, designed here, have that as an add alternate versus just kind of a more of a windbreak, which we initially talked about, new cooler versus we're using our cooler, it can be an add alternate. So there's a couple of things I think we can do to, you know, get this tailored down to where the council feels comfortable with the dollars in the end. And again, the architects are taking a stab at what the estimate is, based on what we're seeing, you know, in the market from last year. But if prices start to come back, stabilize a little bit, or come down in some instances, or we get favorable bids, if there's local contractors that don't have mobilization costs that others might have, maybe we get some very favorable bids. But, you know, we won't know that till further down the line, so.
I guess I like this conceptual idea here. However, and Steve brought up the alternate, is, would it be worth it at this time? Is to, would it be worth the time to look at an additional five foot if you had the room on the property? On the backside? I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking because a lot of your, your cost is not gonna change. I mean, it's a square foot basis when you get into some of that, and if it comes in reasonable, and you can add somehow, maybe pick a length, like on a per foot basis of, I'll call it depth, into the building. You know, maybe think about that, just to give the, the council something to chew on about size, okay? Because I, I think if it, if you have a good value bid, and you wanna take advantage of it, give more space, you know, there might be some options there for a creative solution too. So, I like Steve's idea of alternates.
Just a question going back to the floodplain, John. If you build a new addition long above the floodplain, does that increase the risk to the original store for flooding?
I can't answer that, that would be a question for Mr. Spielman, but I'm su- Yeah, I mean, well, I think he's wondering like if you put something in the floodplain, does it spread that out a little bit more around it?
Mr. Grunig said sandbag.
I think our customers would be happy to help sandbag to save product.
Any other, here we go, Dennis?
One question, that is never, floods have never been close to coming in the building, have they? Or have they been close?
During that biggest flood, they did go around and marked that hundred-year flood elevation. I think it was up about two, yeah, it was about halfway between the river and where we are now, probably. Is where that flood ended up, I think the hundred-year floodplain, they marked, and it was two feet up on our building. If I remember correctly, they kinda just marked that area, but they did mark the area, and we did watch, you know, and there was plenty of room between the liquor store and the floodwaters during that last big flood.
Any final, Jim?
Your air conditioning condensers, aren't they on the outside, on that south side too? They're all gonna have to be moved? Free air, can you free air?
No, our-
I thought there were some out there.
Our air conditioner compressors are on the west side of the building alongside the mechanical room. Inside the mechanical room is two furnaces. There is actually no duct worth that currently runs to the backside of our store. So, in there is, I believe, some HVAC costs associated with providing that to the back room. And then, I would have to take a deeper look, but I'm assuming that they're putting its own air conditioning and heat unit within the new warehouse space. As for the coolers, we have two compressors into the back room, in the back room right now. Those could get reused for the one cooler, they are outdoor units. So during this process, we would make sure that they get put outside the building to prevent excess heat buildup inside that. But the equipment bid did include new compressors as well, if we wanted to not use the compressors that we have due to the age, and I can't speak how old they are at this point.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, John, appreciate it. It's a far cry from what it used to be, right?
It is.
It is, but-
I don't imagine any of you remember how it was fifty years ago.
Well, no.
Down on the corner by where John Holt had his building, it was probably a fourth the size of this room, that's how they started out.
Do you remember that, Jim?
Uh, I never re-looked.
No, I, I didn't mean you remembered it was there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, very good, thank you, thanks, John. Okay, we have a couple donations we'd like to resolve. One is to the arena, from the Arena Booster Club. These are actually ice helpers. I think as part of the terminology, I called them, I don't know what I called them the other day, but, like, yeah, they're ice helpers, helps people learn how to skate with the assistance of a device. So, with that, that was an amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and this is in resolution form, does somebody wish to introduce that resolution?
I would introduce the resolution to accept the donation from the Arena Booster Club for the Wyndham Arena.
I would second.
Resolution, resolution introduced by Jenny and seconded by Marv, any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call?
Benson. Grunig.
Yes.
Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that resolution passes, thank you to the Arena Booster Club. Next, we have the fire department, a generous donation from the Hero Lake Bioenergy, and this is an amount of seven thousand dollars, was there a designated purpose for that, Steve?
Yeah, it was for the hose repair equipment.
Okay, hose repair equipment, of which I believe the chief told us last month that all the hoses are fixed. So, very good pre-use of that. So with that, is there, someone care to introduce that resolution?
I would introduce the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the donation from Hero Lake Bioenergy for the Wyndham Fire Department.
I'll second that.
Introduced by Marv, seconded by Mr. Espin, any other discussion? Any comments? I'll have a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Grunig. Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
And that carries, once again, thank you to Hero Lake Bioenergy. Twenty twenty-three seasonal part-time and lifeguard wage schedule, as seen in your packet. Steve, any explanation, I mean, this is our regular-
Yep, just a quick overview, Minnesota annually adjusts its minimum wage. So last year it was ten thirty-three, it went up to ten fifty-nine, so we're making that adjustment, and then setting the pool wage range for the lifeguards, and then the pool manager, and then other seasonal non-union part-time. I did review this with the department heads, we had a discussion. Obviously with changing labor market, it's, you know, harder and harder to attract help. So we raised our minimum up to twelve, and then instead of running this out over a three-year period of time, we run to the top of the scale in eighteen months. So you had the higher range, and then a six-month, or one year, and an eighteen-month raise. So we're trying to front-load some of that to get quality help.
With that, I'm assuming the, the additional cost is probably pretty minimal to the whole budget?
Yeah, is overall to the budget is fairly minimal. Costs, we did add some in when we did our budgeting, you know, last year, but we didn't know for sure what the numbers were gonna be, so. But it's pretty, pretty minimal across the board, and-
Any questions for Steve? If not, is there action by the council? That would just be a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept. I would second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Marv, to approve the twenty twenty-three seasonal part-time and lifeguard wage scale. Any final questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Next item is additional mayor appointments and reappointments to the board's commissions. I happen to have two this evening. Pardon me?
To add.
To add, why, what did I say? Oh, to add to the current, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, let's go through what Steve has up on the board. Joni Helverson filling the new appointment, retroactive to June eighth, actually twenty twenty-two. This is HRA board, probably not familiar with our requirements to, for the appointments. So I believe that was an in-house one, one of the residents' positions. So that will go through twenty twenty-five. Telecom Commission, Josh Peterson and Dirk Abraham, both would like to be reappointed until the end of twenty twenty-five. And the additional one to the telecom commission is Jason Sherman has volunteered to take up a two-year term on the telecom. That'll at least get us to the point where we can have action on that board. So we still would like to have two more, correct? So Jason Sherman would be in addition to this. Also, I talked with Pam Hogan this afternoon. Pam is willing to take the position vacated by Mr. Brian Joyce to the Park and Rec Commission, and that will go through also, I believe, twenty twenty-four. So that's another two-year, and Pam is involved in, has been with four-H with the kids. She does have extension experience, four-H experience. And also is, I'm looking at Pam to give some vested interest to the horse show group, so. And for the other people who showed interest, I sincerely appreciate that from them. We don't wanna overload the commission with just a, a one-subject type commissioner, but well-rounded. So I, I do think Pam will fit in nice to be that type of liaison in there to the, to the horse show folks and four-H and that sort of thing. So those are the recommended mayor appointments for this evening. Council wish to take action or have questions for me?
I would make the motion to approve the mayor's appointments and reappointments.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Dennis. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Personnel hiring recommendation. This is getting to be a habit again, John. Go ahead, please.
Wish I had a little more control over it, but sometimes it's hard, so. I'm here before you tonight, I am recommending the hire of Kayla Andrews in accordance with the new non-union part-time scale that you guys just approved, at twelve fifty an hour. Recently, I've had one of my non-union part-time employees resign as of December thirty-first. And then, most recently, the new union part-time clerk that was hired in early January has already resigned. So we are re-advertising that position. Kayla did apply during the last round, and it was our recommendation to re-advertise that position. I have talked to her and told her we would consider her for that position, but this will help us get her in, get trained, and help with some staff shortage that we do currently still have. So I ended up working last Saturday, and we got two shifts this weekend to be filled. I've met with her, she can train tomorrow, and she's checking to see if she can fill those two shifts this weekend, if she's ready to go, so.
Okay, recommendation from John is to hire Kayla Andrews at twelve fifty an hour. Any discussion and more questions for John? I would entertain someone to make that motion.
I would make that motion to hire Kayla Andrews.
I'll second.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Jim, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thanks, John.
Hey, John, just out of curiosity, are they telling you why? Or was it an issue going on that you can do something about, or we can do something about?
The main issue with this one is what she told me was, the moral of selling alcohol does not meet her standards. So this is not the job for her. When she applied, she's seen the price in the paper, and she thought she'd give it a try. We've had a few extra training opportunities with her, and I just don't think it was the job for her.
Jenny?
I think overall, you know, I've been in on a lot of the hiring at the liquor store. A lot of people come there to have it be a part-time job, they already have another full-time job. And so they're hoping to come there and maybe work a shift a week or something, but with people leaving, coming and going, sometimes they have to work more than one shift a week, and really it's like they're committed to their regular full-time job that pays the bills. This is just something for extra, and they don't wanna commit to that many shifts a week. So we do have a good part-time help that we have there, it's just we can't overwork them because they do have a regular full-time job as well. So it's just if we could find more people that were willing to just work a few hours here and there, it would be wonderful.
Thanks, John. New business? Any old business, Jenny?
I just wanted to mention, I was at the Southwest Regional Development Commission meeting last week over in Slaton, and at that meeting, the Rock County Commissioner mentioned that they had lifted their moratorium on THC in Rock County. And so I think that'll be a county we can kinda watch and see how things go and how things progress there. I know I've had some people ask me, you know, are you still doing a monthly THC update? And that is something I continue to look at, what is going around. And, yeah, it's in the legislature right now, we need to just continue to observe and see what's going on before we make any decisions. But just to know there was a county near us that-
on before we make any decisions. But just to know there was a county near us that did lift that, and so we'll see how that progresses.
Thank you. Any other new business? Old business? Was that old? Yeah, that was a little business, I'm sorry. Any other older business? Okay, council comments this evening? I think we'll start with Scott.
Just again, with the snow coming and the old snow we got, help your neighbors out and wash the trashcans out in the streets. Say he's going to work this morning and I seen where it's snowplow. They have to plow the streets. So if you put your trashcans too far out in the street, they knock them out and they make a mess. It's not their fault. They're just doing their job. So just try to help everybody else out and do what you can on that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Jim?
I have nothing tonight.
Marv?
I just have a reminder for all of those who haven't done so, please get their city administrator evaluation forms in to me. I won't mention names. And then I would also make a comment on last Wednesday night's meeting that, how well the presenters did in giving their information and commend the mayor on for running a really, really good mayor, good meeting. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Marv.
I have nothing.
Dennis? Nothing this evening? Steve, anything today?
Just to let you know that the one hazardous building will be worked on tomorrow by the contractor, so that will be coming down. There was a home in about a block away that was also taken down. Private party took a home down. So there's two within about a block, block and a half area that came, that will be down. So.
Okay, thank you for the heads up on that. Okay, have we reached out to everybody, I think, right? My comments this evening, I did what Marv said about the attendees at last week's meeting. I thought they all did a very good job keeping on task, making, you know, good comments, which they thought had bearing. And so I, and I believe it was very cordial. I don't think we had to calm anybody down or anything like that. So I also thank the Park and Rec Commission, all of them that were on the board attended. I appreciated that. Also appreciation goes out, I think, and I told John this earlier today, I think he made a great call last night to get out and get some of that ice off of the streets while it was still slushy kind of last night. Yeah, it makes a mess when it's pushed up to the gutter, I understand that. But I had been through a couple smaller cities and my goodness, some of the slush they have, you know, going on. I'm glad we have our Wyndham Street Department to take care of that. So well-run. With that, I have nothing further. We're adjourned by unanimous consent. What'd you want me to say more?